Six o'clock.
This is time, okay. We'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Bella Vista City Council, October 27, 2025. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Council members Honsel.
Here.
Harp.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Newport.
Here.
Wilms.
Here.
And Isabelle.
Here.
Mayor Flynn is here.
Thank you. The first order of business is citizen input. Per the rules, there is a three-minute-per-person time limit to address the council on any topic of that person's choosing. The first person on the list is Maribel Childress of 15 Rath Drive.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to come tonight to say thank you. I am principal of Cooper Elementary School, and I came to speak to Mayor and City Council when I first became principal about 16 months ago to let you know how excited I was to have this role in the community where I live. And now that I've been doing it for a while, I just have to tell you how overwhelmed I am by the community support for Cooper Elementary and just how much we enjoy, how much the community loves on us. And specifically, I want to say thank you to our Bella Vista Fire Department and our Bella Vista Police Department for the commitment that they have made to our students and our staff and our school. Just recently, the Fire Department was there for fire safety, teaching our students about all of the things they need to do to be safe in an emergency. They are great about coming to eat with students when they have time, bringing their fire trucks and the ambulance and the EMS service for students for career days, and we really appreciate that. And I also want to let you know how very excited our parents and the staff and I have been about the addition of our SRO this school year. Shelby is our SRO, halftime SRO that is provided by the city of Bella Vista, and I just want to say a real thank you for that. Our parents notice, and makes them feel great to see her presence and to know that she is there to help our students if there is any need at all. And I have a little bit of knowledge about executive leadership, so I know that you have a finite amount of resources and things that you're required to do, things that you need to do, and things that are just great to do. So I really appreciate you choosing to support Cooper Elementary with your resources and with the SRO. It's something that it means a lot, and it makes us feel great to know that she is there. So thank you so much for loving on Cooper Elementary.
Thank you. The next speaker is Donna Simmons of St. Asaph.
I'm Matt, but Donna is my neighbor, and she asked me to read this. We came to the POA meeting last week, but she's not able to make it tonight. Is that okay that I read for her? Is that including my three minutes?
It's already going.
Okay, well, this is for her. This is for her. "Good evening. Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak this evening. I have been a resident of Bella Vista for the past four years, thoroughly enjoying the peaceful beauty of our area, as did many generations of my family before me. This is why I was greatly disturbed on the evening of October 11th, when the peace in our neighborhood was overtaken by a very loud disruptive party at 5 Nantwich Circle. This disruption lasted well past midnight. The following morning, music could still be heard at my residence across the hollow, which is well more than 30 feet from the residents were, was the residents violating city ordinance. I was told law enforcement had been contacted and responded more than once during that evening mentioned. I did not call that evening, but I hope that I can make an online report with the city code enforcement. Since this option is not available, I will be calling the non-emergency line if this occurs again. One reason why this is so disturbing is that I moved from a town in Arizona, which was very different from Bella Vista, but at the same time, very similar in the fact that it's a hotspot for vacationers, retirement homes, and recreational visitors. During my former occupation as a police officer, I was called to many of those noise complaints at vacation rentals. And what I experienced on the night of October 11th was the same level of disturbance. Oftentimes, the clash between vacation renters and those who had purchased their forever retirement home was volatile. I have an understanding of both sides, a renter who has paid top dollar to enjoy vacation and a resident who purchased their home that has now become located next to a vacation rental and suddenly lost the peace they once enjoyed. If it were possible to require rental owners to include city codes in the rules and the rental contracts, that would be a fair way to let renters know what is and isn't acceptable and what will and won't violate city code. In my former town, there were also permits required for vacation rental owners that could be revoked for repeat ordinance violations. Rental owners were also required to have a local contract available at all times who could respond for repeat law enforcement calls. My hope is that we could come up with a workable plan so that all visitors know the requirements, and we can all enjoy our beautiful area peacefully." Now it's me. Dude, I live right next to this place. I wasn't invited to the party, but I got to hear it all night. That sucks. I've got a nine-year-old child. That disturbance, the police came out multiple times. There were over 20 cars. They were literally parked on the grass, all four of the tires parked on the side of the grass. Big disturbance. I'd like to make that formal complaint so we can figure out how to fix it. Donna brought up some good examples. The other thing I'd like to know is, they have had multiple complaints for their yard. They'll be 24 inches at any given time, and so every three or four weeks, people are having to call in to get it taken care of. So I'd like that addressed to you. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item is council member reply.
I guess one, one comment is that our STR ordinance does require inclusion of references about making noise and parking vehicles and debris spread around the property. So they are notified by the rules within the STR property itself. So it's not that they're uninformed about it.
Sir, sir, you can't, can't talk back.
Any word else? Wendy.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Childress for coming out. I'll see you at work tomorrow. But I agree with you, yeah, the community's been an excellent partner with Cooper Elementary, and I'm so glad that our children get to experience our police and fire departments at their very, very best on a regular basis.
Travis.
I'd just like to reiterate that if there's a complaint at a short-term rental or a private residence that's, you know, that somebody lives in, it's no different. If the police aren't called during the time of that incident, there's not a lot they could do on the back half afterwards. So it's imperative that if you're having issues with a neighbor or a short-term rental, and that you call the police during the time of the incident so they could go and do an investigation. And otherwise, there's nothing that any of us could really do, so.
Okay, I think that concludes the, uh, council member reply. I'd like to thank all the people who spoke today. Our next subject matter is reports. We have the monthly financial report for the period ending August 31, 2025, and it's pretty positive. The total revenues, operating revenues are up 10% over last year. City sales tax is up 14.1% over last year, so it continues to be encouraging. County sales tax was a little softer. It's up 3.1% over last year. And on the operating expense side, we are almost a million dollars under budget through August, so I feel like we're in solid shape so far. Our revenues are more than expected, and our expenses are less than expected. We do have a couple things on the horizon later in the year. There's three, there always are a few months where there's three pay periods. There's three pay periods in October, and that tends to have an effect. And at the end of the year in December, all the police and fire get paid their holiday pay for the whole year. So there's always, there's still a few challenges ahead of us, but I feel good about our financial so far. The next item is the consent agenda. And, well, first, I need to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances, ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
No move.
That was Larry Wilms and Craig Honsel. Roll call vote.
Council members Honsel.
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
And Isabelle?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item is the consent agenda, and on that is the approval of the minutes from September 22, 2025, and the regular city council meeting of October 15, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Wendy and Anna, Wendy Hughes and Anna Isabelle. Roll call vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Council members Honsel.
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
And Isabelle?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next item is unfinished business. Is an ordinance establishing a business license requirement for qualifying businesses operating within the city, providing for classes and exemptions, requiring, requiring annual renewal, establishing fees, providing penalties for violations, and for other purposes. This is on third reading, and I believe there's also some proposed amendments.
There are. Originally, three, three amendments were submitted. The mayor gave me a hard time at our work session this week, so I asked that the third amendment be removed, and that was setting an initial license fee. It's still on the sheet here, but I would ask that we not consider that. I would ask to consider the first two proposals to amend the ordinance individually. There's merit on each of them, but it may vary with the council members as to how they view that item and its importance. So I would submit the amendment to Section 4B to read.
These were provided and included in the packet. So these were provided and included in the packet, so I'm not sure you have to read it off.
That, that, that item currently reads charitable and fundraising activities conducted solely for public benefit by schools or city government. And I, my amendment proposes adding charitable or fundraising activities conducted solely for public benefit are also, would be, would be also included. So as an example, the Bella Vista Foundation, who has a very charitable and, and excellent fundraising program every year for the last, I don't know, 15 or 20 years at least, contributed significant funds to all of the nonprofits around Bella Vista, and they would not be able to function without this amendment because they're not a part of the city or a part of the schools. And there are other organizations as well that would not be able to function under this, would not be exempt under this ordinance if we don't add this provision. So I would make a motion to amend Section 4B.
So if I'm understanding, your motion is to amend 4B to read as provided in the insert in the agenda. And so what that does, as, as it's drafted on, on proposed Section 4B, which is on page two, it currently reads charitable, charitable or fundraising activities conducted solely for public benefit by schools or city government. And so practically, what it would do is strike the words "by schools or city government" from that sentence.
Yeah, so it eliminates the limitation. Wendy?
So Larry, I do love this amendment. I think it's a fantastic addition to remove the school and city government portion. I had concerns as well, especially regarding...
Hang on. Mayor, there's a motion to amend, but there's not been a second. And so there would need to be a second to debate that particular amendment. Or was, Mr. Wilms, were you going to try and do both of these as one amendment?
We're going to do them separately.
Okay, so you had a motion to amend.
I think there's different opinions about the council. What?
Second.
That was a motion by Larry Wilms and a second by Wendy Hughes.
Now there can be debate on the amendment, so sorry to interrupt.
I had the same concerns, and I even wanted to make sure that we didn't need either words nonprofit. I did speak to Jason regarding this to make sure that nonprofits in general would be covered, and based on the definitions of what a business is, nonprofits would be covered under this as well. So I felt a little more comfortable, especially supporting your amendment.
Anna?
So just to clarify, nonprofits would be part, included as an excluded class?
So, well, what, if I can answer that, Mayor, in Section 2, we have definitions, and we define what a business is. And so the definition of a business in Section 2, it's on the first page, "Business means any trade, profession, vocation, commercial enterprise, or occupation conducted for profit or gain." So if it's not for profit, it's not a business. And so if it's not a business, it doesn't have to get a license. So we're handling it through definition.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Well, do we vote on the amendment first?
Yes, sir. Once debate is concluded on the amendment, you can vote, have a vote on the amendment.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote on the First Amendment by Mr. Wilms.
Council members Honsel.
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Larry, would you like to talk about your Second Amendment?
The last one has to do with short-term rentals, and, and that's Section 4F. It says, "In our short-term rental ordinance, it exempts them from licensing." But I, I wanted to include or not exclude them because, exclude businesses that may do property management, which includes STR properties in that list. And they could argue that, well, we do STR, so we're exempt. I don't know if that's a valid argument or not, and I would guess maybe the attorney would like to comment about whether that would allow them to be exempt.
Well, I, I, your proposed amendment would clarify that property management businesses are not exempt. So that's the purpose, that's, that's what I take from your proposed amendment.
That, that's what it intends.
The current, the current proposal, as it is in Section 4, just exempts short-term rentals as defined in the short-term rental ordinance. So the business of, of managing those would not be exempt, according to your amendment, if your amendment is adopted.
Travis?
Just for the record, any business that's home-based and that does not have customers coming in and out, I will not support a business license for that, so.
Well, and I, and I need to, it's not for me to enter into debate, but in subsection E, which is not a subject of the proposed potential amendment, which has not been moved, exempts home-based occupations. So if it's part of a home-based occupation, it's going to be exempt that way.
Right.
Yeah, I see your point, Travis. You're worried about inadvertently bringing them in, but I think we will be okay on that. Yeah, I've kind of viewed this amendment more as a clarification than really a change, but that doesn't mean it's not a good idea to clarify.
I would make a motion unless, unless there's more discussion.
My, my only other, sorry, thanks, Mayor. My only other discussion on this is that if you're in a short-term rental business here in Bella Vista, it's extremely regulated already. There's already fees associated with it. You already have to get licensing. You have to send in financial reports monthly to the Advertising and Promotion Commission. So I feel like there's a lot of legwork and there's a lot of cost involved in operating a short-term rental business here. So if you're in the management of short-term rental businesses, and you have to get an additional license with an additional fee to keep track of, I don't support that.
That, that's, that's not a part of this proposal. This proposal is for property management businesses that do rental of all sorts of things is to, if, if a part of their operation includes STRs, that doesn't make them exempt. That's what this provision does. So it doesn't make any STR groups inclusive because they're already exempt by the STR ordinance. What this does do is that if there are property management businesses in the city that include STRs as a part of their portfolio, it wouldn't exempt them. They wouldn't have that as a basis to be exempt. That's all this says. Is that correct, sir?
It's your amendment, but, and that's the intention, and that's what I intended to write.
That was the intent.
Is there any more discussion?
There needs to be a motion to amend.
Yeah.
And a second.
Motion to amend Section...
4F.
4F to read, um, short-term, to amend it to add, "Short-term rentals as defined in the city's short-term rental ordinance," which is already there.
Can I, can I help you out, Mr. Wilms? It's to, you want to do this, right?
Yep.
Okay. So it would be to amend Section 4F, which currently reads, "Short-term rentals as defined in the city's short-term rental ordinance." It would amend that to read, "Short-term rentals as defined in the city's short-term rental ordinance, property management businesses, even though managing short-term rentals as part of their operation, shall not be exempt." Change it to read like that.
Second.
Was there a second, Greg?
Second.
Okay, motion by Larry Wilms and second by Craig Honsel. Roll call vote on the amendment.
Council members Honsel?
Yes.
Harp?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. We now have the ordinance on the business license with the two amendments, and it's on third reading. Is there any discussion of the ordinance in general?
Just, if I may, I'd like to thank Larry for his diligence, reading through. There's a lot of information in these packets, and to catch the things that he is able to catch sometimes blows my mind. But, uh, I, good job, Larry.
Thank you.
And make a motion to approve. This is third reading, correct?
It was Greg, motion by Craig Honsel to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a second by Shay Newport. Is there more discussion, or do you want a roll call vote? Shay?
There's definitely discussion, but I'll, I'll pause and let someone else jump in.
Okay, Travis?
I'll go first. I don't mind. Just to reiterate that I'm opposed to this. I don't think it's a terrible idea. I understand. I spoke with the Fire Department, and I understand their angle on this. However, I just don't think we're to a point where I can support this. I've said it many times, and I'll continue to say it. We need to do everything we can as a city to increase businesses here in Bella Vista, because that's how we're going to get enough funds to provide the services that our citizens deserve. I don't think we're going to get it by increasing taxes and fees and licensing. And this is just another step, another red tape, another license, another fee to get a business up and running here in Bella Vista. And I think right now, we should focus on making it easier and cheaper and more streamlined.
Larry Wilms?
I guess my view, and I've stated it at the work session, is that I, I don't believe this proposal adds any value to any of our business in Bella Vista existing, or any value to a future business coming to Bella Vista. It's a convenience for our departments, but my feeling is, is that if you're a business owner, you need to be responsible and know what the rules are. If you don't understand the rules, maybe you shouldn't be in your business. So it makes the owner responsible for negligence or missing opportunities, which have been recited by our police chief and, and planning director in the past as to why they're proposing this, so.
Okay, Wendy?
So our city currently not having business permit has not made it a beacon or a safe haven for businesses to land here. If it had, we'd have businesses left and right knocking down the doors to come to Bella Vista. And we've other issues that have caused roadblocks for that, but us not having a business license requirement has not been the green light for people to come here and want to land here. That's a whole nother ball wax, why we need to change and do to actually get businesses here, to entice them, to court them, to make them want to land here. I do, if my colleagues are agreeable to it, would like to maybe push this off for a month, for us to really sink into it and make sure, if we're going to pass something that is exactly what we need to pass at the first go, and not make changes to it later. And so if people are agreeable to it, I'd like to table this for one more month, to give it a little more time.
Mayor, there's already a motion to approve in a second, so that would not be in order at this time.
Oh, okay. Thank you for your discussion. I, I would like to point out that Taylor Robertson provided you with a list of what all the other cities do, and every Class 1 city in the entire area has this. The only cities that don't have a business license are little tiny places. And Rogers, Fayetteville, Bentonville, and Springdale all have it, and they seem to be attracting businesses just fine. Travis?
With that point, Mayor, I'd like to point out that the point of the business license is to track businesses, so you know exactly how many are in your city. And we were not able to be provided with how many businesses are in those cities, and so it defeats the purpose of having the license if you can't track them. I got, I asked for a list of how many businesses are in those cities, and we did not get a complete list.
From, from who? You mean you asked the cities how many businesses they had, or...
Yes, I asked Director Robertson. So I may have explained that bad, but basically, the point of the business license is to track how many businesses you have, or if they're coming or going. I asked for a number of how many businesses those cities that require a business license have, and we weren't able to get that number.
Shay?
I thought I had asked for it, and I don't remember asking for number of businesses, but maybe you asked off to the side, but just so that it's, yeah, I don't want it to seem like she didn't do the assignment. She met my, she met my request, so maybe that's what was sent out. If, I have a question for Mr. Kelly. If we, I know we need to vote on the ordinance, and tabling it is now not an option, right? But if we vote it, I'm sorry. And however, if we do vote it down, we can also pick it back up and reconsider it.
If, if, if the person who moved to approve it wants to withdraw their motion, and the person who seconded it is willing to withdraw their second, then you can get to a position where you could table it, if you want, without having a final vote at this time.
Okay. Okay.
So I'd like to remove my motion.
Okay, you're withdrawing your motion to approve?
My withdrawing, yes, I'm sorry.
And then who made the second?
I also withdraw.
Mayor, I'm not running the meeting. You've got to do it.
Now someone wants to make a motion to table it. Wendy Hughes?
I'd like to make a motion to table this ordinance for one month. Seconded.
Okay, so that will be to be heard at the regular meeting in November.
So that was Wendy Hughes and Shay Newport. Roll call vote on the motion to table the business license.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Harp?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wills?
No.
Isbell?
Yes.
Motion to table carried four to two. Thank you for the discussion. The next one is an ordinance D establishing respective cost sharing of health benefits between the city of Bella Vista and certain police department and fire department retirees and their dependents, and this had been tabled until October. Travis, I had the impression at the work session you wanted to withdraw this, but I'm open to whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I'd like to withdraw that, or I'm not going to entertain a motion for that. I'll go to the 85 eligibility standard one.
So Mayor, what we've got to do is we need to table that indefinitely if we're not going to consider it.
Yeah, okay.
Or table it to a day certain.
I just wanted to make sure what his motivation was, you know, give him a chance.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll move to table it indefinitely.
Okay.
Second.
That was Larry Wills and Wendy Hughes, motion to table the resolution in D indefinitely. Any more discussion? Shay?
I just want to make sure that Travis feels that he's heard before we table something indefinitely.
Yes, I appreciate it.
I'm here for you. Okay.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
And Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried to table it indefinitely, six to zero. Now we're into new business. Next one is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in a total amount not to exceed $128,314 for the purchase of two 2025 Ford F-250 trucks for use by the police department. And there's a little discussion of this at the work session, and Tim Cook gave us a little summary. Would you like to hear more about it or discuss it? Travis?
I'd just like to say that I was not going to support this until I heard his explanation, so I feel pretty good about this purchase, though.
Shay Newport?
I don't see it in here, but is staff asking for a third and final on this?
I think they are, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah. Yeah, that hadn't been communicated, but it could go to third and final if people are so motivated.
Just to confirm with the chief, this is budgeted item, correct?
Yeah.
I would move to waive the rules and move to third and final reading.
Okay.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
That was Larry Wills and Craig Hansel was the second. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote on the motion to waive the rules and...
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
And Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. I'll read it for the third and final time. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in a total amount not to exceed $128,314 for the purchase of two 2025 Ford F-250 trucks for use by the police department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Craig Hansel and a second by Larry Wills. Roll call vote?
Councilmembers Hansel?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
And Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Thank you very much for that. Next one is an ordinance amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance in MAP to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2025-59940, county parcel number 16-43269-000 from RE Residential State District to C2 Local Commercial. The petitioner is here and would like to make a brief presentation. Mr. Keough, would you like to come up?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present before you. My name is Jack Keough. That's my wife Riley and our daughter Esther back there. I first came to Bella Vista 10 years ago and love Bella Vista. And my wife and I recently purchased a home close to Lake Windsor. And today, my hope is to present before you in hopes of changing the zoning on a parcel that we purchased from residential estate to commercial. So I made a presentation, which, yeah, is shown here. I think there's a big need for more commercial development in Bella Vista, as we were previously discussing. And in, on the economic development page, it cites the 2018 consultant study estimating that there's 137 million spent annually on retail by current residents and 129 million of those dollars are being spent outside of Bella Vista. And losing that spend just suggests that there might be a gap in the local services in compared to other cities nearby us. And so if we could go to the next slide. I think Bella Vista can be gaining from these commercial dollars that are being spent elsewhere, and we could further promote business here in Bella Vista and retain that spend. This graph on the top just shows the number of restaurants in Bella Vista in comparison to Bentonville and Rogers. You can see that there's OnTrip Advisor around 25 or so restaurants here in comparison to 225 in Bentonville, which, yes, Bentonville has a larger population, but it's slightly less than double. And so if we were to compare where Bella Vista would be in comparison to Bentonville, you can look at the second graph, and that would be the number of restaurants here in Bella Vista. And since 2020, there's been an 11.91% population growth. And so I think that there is a need for more restaurants and coffee shops. Yesterday, my wife and I were at Table Upon, and they turned people away just because it's busy. And I think that there's opportunity for other restaurants to also be able to help service the residents here in Bella Vista. If you can go to the next slide. This is one potential use. I had a rendering and a site plan created that could go on this property, which is, once we go to the next slide, I'll show you where the property is located. But it's right across from the Village Center, which is where Bella Vista's table is. And I believe it'd be a great location for a small restaurant or a coffee shop that could serve the needs here of residents and further promote growth as well as commercial tax dollars, and could become like a cool spot like Onyx or Airship, like some cool little coffee shop here in Bella Vista.
Sir, I want to, I told you I represented this at the work session. When we're talking about a rezoning, they can't really consider a specific use that you may propose. They have to look at all potential uses.
Okay.
The information you volunteer is what you wish to volunteer, but they can't base their decision on any one particular use. They're going to look at the entire code. I just want to make sure you understand that.
Okay, yep, thank you. And as we can see here, this is based on a major arterial road on Lancashire, directly across from C2 Commercial. And it is called the Village Center, which I think makes sense as a place to add more commercial as the city grows outside of Commercial. So it is directly across from Commercial and then adjacent to two other residential estate. If you could go to the next one, please. Here's just showing it from the other side. And then if you could go to the next. There were a few issues brought up at the last meeting, and I just would like to address those issues. I've also spoken with two of the neighbors, one of which shared last meeting. Darren Callahan, we spoke for 45 minutes on the phone. He is the one directly to the right, if you're looking up at it. He owns that house. And him and his wife shared at the last council meeting some concerns around privacy. And so I've discussed with him that I'm very happy to help increase, like I know in the city plans that there are already codes for commercial next to residential, but I have talked with him that I'm very happy to increase tree buffers and to help with privacy concerns with the neighbors next door. And then I'm also, I know that there was an email sent in around, someone had concern, a resident had concerns around marijuana store or adult entertainment, something like that. And I would like to propose to self-restrict. I personally would not want that to happen. And so I'm proposing self-restricting to no liquor store, marijuana store, or adult entertainment on this rezone.
So are you saying you're offering a bill of assurance to the council?
That could be, if that would be the best route to...
You're the one talking. I just want to make sure.
And then, so two properties over, I spoke to one of the neighbors who is two properties over to the east. And Randy Robuck, and he's at 633 West Lancashire. His is zoned commercial in the county. And so, and his is also next to, adjacent to residential. And then across the street, the Village Center is C2 and is adjacent to residential as well. And so I think that the code kind of prepares for this situation where there's going to be commercial next to residential. And then if you could go to the next one. As far as topography, those are some concerns that were raised. With a smaller development, there is, it is flatter in the center and the front of this parcel. And it would be possible to develop something with not that much grading, but I am prepared to grade the parcel. And then if you could go back to the other slide, there was a third slide. Utilities. Oh, it's not in there? Another concern was utilities, which is on your, I have this slide on your, I believe it's on the pamphlet I sent. But I spoke with Centerton Water, with Centerton Utilities, and I was told over the phone, she thought that we could pull water. It would be at developer costs across, because across the street they're being serviced from a water perspective from Centerton Utilities. I'm still waiting to hear back in an email further detail on that. But then an additional route would be to create, to put in a septic and a well, which we're prepared to do as well. So those are the reasons that I wanted to present my request to rezone to commercial.
Travis?
Thanks for your presentation. I'm an avid supporter of small businesses here. I don't know if you've heard me say that even in this meeting, but my only issue with this, and if there was a way that you could legally, you know, offer us assurance on the type of business, that would be fantastic. But it's your proposal, and you would have to come up with that, I think. But I made an amendment to this that I would be supporting tonight if you were interested. And it just basically takes it from a C2 to a C1. And then I would just vote, you would get my vote for C1 tonight, but I'm only one vote, so.
Wendy?
Kind of piggybacking on that, why did you choose the intensity of C2 opposed to CR or C1?
I was encouraged by someone that, because it's across from C2, that it would most naturally make sense to go for a rezone that was the same as what it was across from. But I'm open to C1. That was just the reason that I proposed the C2.
Wendy?
And then Taylor, what is CR again? Okay.
Larry?
I guess a couple of comments relative to your proposal and presentation, Mr. Keough. Restaurants in Bella Vista versus Bentonville and Rogers. Bella Vista was created by a developer buying a huge quantity of land and planning for it originally, I think, to be retirement homes, meaning people would be here only half of the year or part of the year. And so he did not provide commercial space commensurate with this being a planned city with a normal population distribution, okay? So as a result of that, with part-time people being here, businesses could not function unless they had year-round operations, year-round customers. And so there wasn't a development of restaurants in Bella Vista, and there still isn't today because we still have quite a few who have become accustomed to shopping for restaurant food outside of our city. And so that's one of the reasons we don't have a lot of restaurants here. We don't have a lot of space that was originally provided for, okay? The other thing would be, where you're suggesting to do is rezone a piece of residential property that's between two other residential properties and adjacent to more residential properties to the south. Some in the business might call this spot zoning. And I don't know whether that's the classification or not, but it could be used and applied here. Suggesting that you would like to put in a coffee shop, if we were to base our decision upon that, would be a contract zoning, and that's illegal in all states. Screening, the screening of the property from the neighbors and whatever is provided by our development code. And it's very explicit about what it requires when you're next to another business, residence, a public entity, whatever. So you're covered there. You don't have to commit to that. They'll take care of it when the project comes in for approval. Utilities, water and sewer. I don't know that that land was owned by Cooper. I think that was not a part of the Cooper acquisition, so it can't be serviced by Cooper's Bella Vista water system. So it likely falls upon the original rural water district that serves that area and the shopping center across the street from you. South and east of where you are and west of where you are is served by the old rural water district, Water Authority Number 1 in Benton County, which was acquired and purchased by Centerton Utilities, and so they operate that now. For sewer, I don't know that there's any regulation about the sewer. If it's available in the area, they're an independent, private utility. And I think that if they can get access to put it there, they may be able to serve you. You'd need to consult with them, so.
Travis?
I just wanted to remind the council that C1 is commercial residential. I think that's how it's stated, so it's, to me, it fits perfectly with what he's trying to, where he's trying to put this business. And we've got to be the only city of 35,000 people in Arkansas without a coffee shop. And I know we have to make this to where it fits any business with C2. I understand that. So that's why I wanted to propose this amendment that goes to C1. And I believe that's commercial residential. Am I saying that right, Taylor? Neighborhood commercial, sorry.
Shay Newport?
Just a couple of clarifications. We could let this go to two...
We could let this go to two more readings, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then it is a little confusing, I think, for probably everyone since we've adopted new codes that won't go into effect until December.
So this is, this would not take effect until after the effective date of the new code, and so that's been taken into account. And so you would be looking at the schedule of uses in the new C2 currently, or the new C1. There's not been an amendment offered yet, but, so you'd be looking at that schedule of uses.
And there's also a CR in the new one as well, right? Okay, so, and that's even less intense usage than one or two.
Mayor, it might be helpful for Taylor to be able, since there was a presentation, to be able to tell the council what this is about.
Yeah, I thought it would be good to have Taylor speak as well. Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thanks so much.
Very nice, very nice presentation.
Thank you.
Your baby tried to upstage you, but...
I'm happy to take any questions you guys may have, but I gave a pretty thorough overview during the work session of this request. The packet that you guys had before you does have C2, local commercial with the new code for your review, and as well as the planning commission reviewed both because we predicted this exact situation would happen. So we wanted to consider both during the time of the public hearing, and then the local commercial C2 is provided for your table of uses. And that is what is being considered. There is another option as well that hasn't been discussed. It was discussed well before our pre-application. Everyone keeps talking about use specific. The only use-specific application that you guys can consider, one specific use, is something called a planned zoning district. That is when they disclose the entire master development, enter a contract agreement with you all. You get to see exactly what's going to be developed before you guys approve the rezone. So it's approved at the same time. Other than that, we must consider all uses within the table.
And so that, that's one thing I need to add, because I asked a question about whether he was offering a bill of assurance, and I need to tell the council what that's about. We've never done that here before. It's something that could be done. Someone who's seeking a rezoning could offer. We can't request it, and we can't mandate it, but could offer what's called a bill of assurance, which would basically give the city some protection from certain uses that otherwise would be allowed in a zone that would prohibit it. So he mentioned a bill, a bill of assurance that would preclude liquor stores and adult entertainment venues. I asked, and I'm not entirely sure that those would even be allowed in a, in a C2 or a C1. But did we get an answer to that question?
Adult entertainment is only allowed conditionally, as approved by the planning commission, in the industrial district. It's not allowed in any park.
So that would be of no use to you. Liquor stores, I don't...
I need, I need more time to confirm with the code.
And so that, really, the point there is if they offer a bill of assurance, they need to do that in writing. We need to see it and know what the terms of those are. And that becomes a factor that you can consider. They're wanting to talk, so I can't talk over.
Oh, no, just, I had a question. So the bill of assurance, would that be basically a de-restriction where that...
Basically, yes.
So it would follow new owners?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah, we, we have a entrepreneur here that wants to open up a business in Bella Vista, and I think we ought to do whatever it takes to get that done. I like what Taylor presented as another option from here. But is, could you tell us, Taylor, is C1 more appropriate there?
C1 is less intense. You have actually three options that are less intense than what he's requested. C1, commercial recreation, and then trail oversight, trailside overlay, which is very specific in uses and minimal. That addresses outdoor mobile vending, coffee shops, restaurants, things like that, things that are along the, within small residential areas as well. So you actually have three options if you're just looking for a less, more, more or less intense use than C2.
Wendy?
Is the TSO the most restrictive?
It's the...
Or CR? Which one would...
Least amount of uses?
Yes.
That's going to be TSO.
TSO, okay.
What about the water situation? I saw you shaking your head back there.
Yeah, I called, and this was one of the pieces of information they gave at the work session as well, but this piece of property doesn't have access to Centerton Water or POA Water. It's in the area because of the Village Shopping Center across the street, but Centerton said this parcel is not within their service area.
They service the area to the south of this.
They said they would not provide service to this parcel. When we did our research. So this most likely would need ADH approval for a well, and then some type of onsite wastewater management. And if it's commercial, a leach field's probably not going to be applicable to that.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mayor?
Travis?
So why not let the business owner worry about that?
One of the requirements that staff has to present is suitability for development. And so that's why that was presented, as well, as well as the topography concerns.
I, I thought that Shay had a good point, that this is first reading, and it says, seems to be a complicated situation. Shay?
I do have one other question, just because I'm not, I know there's like an application, and there's a certain ask. I guess this question's to Mr. Kelly. You know, Travis proposed an amendment about C1, but would amendments work in this case? Could, if we want, can council propose amendments for TSO?
The city can, the council has the authority to zone it however it sees fit. So you have the full authority to, to, to zone it. I mean, the, the process has gone through the planning commission, there's been a public hearing, but you ultimately determine what the zone is.
Except for PZD, that is not an option.
Thank you.
Well, yes, yeah.
And then, sorry, one other question. Hold on, I lost it. Buffering one second. Nope, I'll come back, sorry, I forgot.
Wendy?
Just for clarification, our proposed changes for the zoning would have to be amendments, correct, written amendments?
The current proposal is to go from RE to C2. If you want to go to any other zone, you're going to have to have a motion to amend, go through that process, and then there's three readings and final approval, just like any other organs.
Perfect, thank you.
Shay?
I remembered. Just for the benefit of everyone, I know this is in the packet, but can you tell us what this parcel is deemed under our future land use that we did just adopt last month?
The zoning? Okay, the zoning has it as RE residential estate as well. Future land use is a little bit different. Future land use has this designated as a future neighborhood, but it is within a Type 2 node on the outskirts of it. And that is talked about in the staff report as well. Our Type 2 Village Center node should be most intense at the intersection of 279 and 340, and then less intense on its way out.
Travis?
Mayor, is there any way the city can work with the applicant and get some more options on the table and present that, like, next work session?
What do you mean by other options? Because we cannot get into specific uses.
Okay. I was just trying to think of a way we could, you know, if you wanted to present, like, the full plan, whatever that was called.
We did discuss PZD at the pre-app. That was one of the options we discussed. But we can't, staff can't amend at this point, or this is all within your guys' realm at this point.
It's on our table.
Okay, I'll get with the applicant then, and I'll, I'll bring something to the work session, hopefully.
Wait a minute. To do what? Because we're legally bound, I'm not just being a pain here, there are legal reasons why we can't get into specific...
All right, well, then I would, I would motion to amend to move to the C1.
So there's a motion?
There's a motion to amend to C1? Is there a second? It dies for lack of a second, so Wendy?
Offer that again next month or another time in the future?
I'd like this to go to three readings. It seems like a very complicated issue. I think we all agree that we do need more commercial businesses in Bella Vista. We all want to see that growth. We want to see that commercial tax base grow, but we also want to make sure that we are doing right, doing it the right way. I did have another question. Have we looked at traffic studies that could possibly entail having turning traffic, higher intensity traffic going in different directions?
There is not been a traffic study. Typically, that's done at the time of large scale. So this is, this is way before that, so, yeah.
Usually when you can't get water and the planning commission voted it down six to one, you don't feel like you're ready for a traffic study yet. Larry?
I guess I, I could look back at the planning commission when they considered this, and they had viable reasons for not supporting it. And I, I cannot support the proposal, whether it's C1 or C2. I think it fits into spot zoning, it fits into contract zoning in some regards, because of what we've heard and what we presented. Are we voting because of something that has been presented to us? The fact that it doesn't have water or sewer utility access for commercial is going to make it difficult for marketability if this is, if this owner chooses to sell it. Commercial places need public water and public sewer to be viable. That's in Bella Vista, that's anywhere where it's available. There are communities that rely solely on private wells and septic systems, but we're not one of those, even though we have them in our community. So I can't support any proposal at all, and I'm on the side of the planning commission not supporting it.
Craig?
Well, and that's, Larry pretty much sums up my feelings on it too, because that's, anytime I consider anything, do I want to live next to it? And is it safe? And until those two, I can rationalize those two criteria. I mean, if there is a bill of assurance that we could guarantee screening, noise, et cetera, things that impact, I know, I know we can't. But that's what I'm saying, is that those are the concerns that I have, seeing, before I get painted as the, you know, I love to see small business. I think it's great. But the challenge to this is kind of location, and that's, I didn't know what the criteria was for like a traffic study. I knew, I didn't, I didn't know if we were into that realm. But as proposed, I'm, I'm going to have a struggle with it. It doesn't mean that I'm not going to do legwork. I need to talk to neighbors, see how they feel, and all that kind of stuff. So I mean, it is, you know, this is the first time, first reading, so anything can happen. Thanks for the proposal, you did it great.
Okay.
One last comment.
Larry, go ahead.
I want to thank the, thank Mr. Keel for, for having the creative thought to bring this forward, to rezone it, to make it into something that would benefit the city. I think I, he needs a compliment for that. The reality is, I, I don't think it's a good plan for this particular site. No water, no sewer. It's going to be difficult for you if you develop this, or it's going to be extremely difficult to sell it as a commercial property, so. And not only that, but it's sandwiched between two existing residential houses, and they would not be pleased with whatever would go in there, so.
Okay, I think we'll let it go to second reading, and maybe people can think, can think about it. But I do thank Mr. Keel for his presentation. Very helpful. The next one is a resolution establishing a health insurance premium credit for eligible police and fire department retirees and their dependents based upon a rule of 85 eligibility, eligibility standard. And this was proposed by myself, and, and the attorney helped write it up. I spoke to human resources about it, and they were very helpful. And I was going to the philosophy of, you know, one side wants this, the other side wants nothing, so maybe the answer's somewhere in the middle. It was the general philosophy, so. I don't know if anybody wants to comment on it, or...
I have a question for HR. How, how confident are you of the projections that were presented for us to review for the, this proposed resolution? Are you pretty confident about that, based on what we have now?
Is it on? Okay, yeah, I looked at it several different times. It is very limited in the number of people that will ever qualify for it because as it's the rule of 85, it's age plus years of service. Fire and police can retire quite young, if they start young. And so a lot of people choose to retire prior to even getting there. The reason some of these people will be eligible that I looked at and counted in that count, excuse me, allergies. Part of the reason for those people being eligible is they have service from their time at the POA as well, included in their age plus years of service calculation.
The same really would apply to the other ordinance that we withdrew, the one that Councilor Travis Harp presented. That would have a limited...
Yes.
...participation as well.
Yes.
But the cost to the city would be much different under that proposal.
Because more people would qualify under that.
Right, so. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying.
Any other comments, so?
Second.
That was Greg Honchel and Larry Wilmes. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Honchel?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
And Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Thank you for that. The last one is a resolution amending the 2025 budget to authorize one additional full-time building inspector position in the fire department. We talked about this a little bit at the work session, and the fire chief and Roger Geyer, the chief building official, went back and studied it, and I thought that a budget amendment wouldn't be necessary because for the rest of this year, it's just a month or two, you know, depending when you hire the person. So they think they can do it within their existing budget. So it's just, the vote is just to add a person. Travis?
Yeah, I've spoke with both of them at links with this and in detail. I support this. There's an issue getting these, these builds off the ground, up running. Talked to the mayor about it. People are sitting on job, you know, two to four weeks without making progress. That's expensive. They pass that on to the buyer. It's expensive to keep your construction workers actively engaged on your site if there's no work they can do until they get the, the inspection for the next phase. So I support this. I think it's, it's, it's no longer a desire, it's a need.
Motion to withdraw?
Wendy? That was Wendy Hughes and Greg Honchel. Go ahead, Larry.
Can I get in a comment before you guys do that?
Well, you can still discuss after the motion's second.
Okay, all right, all right. My, my, my thought being is that, in my experience, the building inspection program, the key people in there are funded by the fees and rates for the permits that are issued. And so I don't know if we're doing that. I've heard from the outside that maybe our rates are not high enough, contrary to the builders' complaints about how high they are to build in Bella Vista. Part of that has to do with two layers. You have a ACC, which regulates the outside of the building or structure, and you have us who regulates the outside and the inside. So it's, it's a matter of, it's a matter of how really is it? And if you count both of them, we're probably higher, but I think our fees itself should support our inspection team, maybe not the director or manager for it, but the inspection team. It should cover the cost of all of the reviewing staff, not the, not the planning commission, but the reviewing staff internally that do reviews of plans and projects, so. That would be my comment about it.
Mayor?
My question, my other question is, while we, our budget this year can afford hiring one now, will we be able to afford an additional person in this capacity next year? Because this year, we're, we have a budget that's currently $800,000 under, underwater.
Yeah, we, well, we do, did have this person in the budget that the rough draft that was presented to you had this person in it.
But not in the final version?
Well, we haven't got the final version yet, that's why I said the rough draft version.
Oh, you're talking about the draft for next year?
Yeah, I'm talking about the 2026 budget.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We were anticipating hiring this, and, and you know, the need is so great that building community has really gotten super active, and there's a lot of pressure to... there's a lot of pressure to do something about the inspection situation. It's, it's become a daunting task, because it's kind of like it was a rocket ship that was going up, and now, it's really going up, it's just getting faster and faster. Travis?
I disagree with the fees, I think this is a situation where we need more businesses and more sales tax. That's how we afford this.
I did, there was a person either last meeting or the meeting before, who was a builder, who basically got up and said all of our fees were way too low, if you'll recall. So, he didn't miss any words about it, I thought that was interesting.
We get other complaints from other builders, but that's neither here nor there.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
We have a motion and second?
Yeah, we had the motion second already.
Council members Honchel?
Yes.
Harp?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Thank you for that. Announcements, the next city council work session is 5:30 PM on Monday, November 17 at the Bella Vista, I think it's at the district court. Next city council regular meeting is 6:00 PM, Monday, November 24, at Bella Vista District Court. Planning commission work session, 4:30 PM, Thursday, October 30, at Bella Vista District Court. Planning commission regular meeting at 4:30 PM or immediately following BCA meeting, Monday, November 10, at Bella Vista District Court. Board of Construction Appeals, 3:00 PM, Wednesday, November 12, if necessary, at fire station number four, conference room 1639 Forest Hills Boulevard. If there's not anything else, we're adjourned.